So, we have a couple announcements. Chris, you have one?
Um, well, I just want to announce, it didn't get out in the bulletin, but the Aqua Aerobics class is now up and running. It's gonna be Mondays and Fridays from 5:30 to 6:30, and Sunday from 1:00 to 2:00. Seven dollars per class. It's at the town pool, so you drop in and do it if you want. Thanks.
Uh, the Rhinebeck/Rhinebach German exchange students are in our town for the next couple of weeks. They came here last Saturday, and um, they'll be performing throughout the community. I don't know what their schedule is. Um, when we greeted them, uh, we typically exchanged gifts from, uh, our communities, and this year we gave a, um, a glass sculpture that was, uh, created by Gary Etnor, and, um, he had actually donated, um, a large portion of that, uh, so we thanked him, and it was really a great way to greet these kids this year, so... Thank you, Gary Etnor. Uh, he's, uh, he's a local artist in our community, so, uh-
He's Barry Etnor?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Barry Etnor. I'm doing good with names today, but, Barry Etnor. Thank you, Barry. Anybody have announcements?
Okay.
Can I just give one quick shout-out to where I was all day today? This I play for, it's for the Street Soccer USA for the homeless, and they just had their annual tournament down in New York City today, so I apologize for both my appearance and my sweatiness, but it was a great, great event. You can find it online. Thanks.
Anybody else? We have a presentation tonight from Justice Kane. It's on the, um, special prosecutor appointment, and Judge, would you please take the stand? I can't say that too often, can I?
Thanks for asking me here tonight. Uh, I'm here to address the board on the benefits of a special prosecutor, which I've, uh, seen from different perspectives. Um, purpose of a special prosecutor is to be the point person that can handle traffic tickets and some zoning matters, uh, as directed by the town board. Uh, we have not had a special prosecutor before, and I'll get into the, uh, little of the details, because I think it benefits, it's gonna benefit the town very, uh, well. Other towns, surrounding towns, Red Hook, Myland, and Stanford, among other places, have special prosecutors. But the benefit of a special prosecutor is the point person for traffic tickets, and that's the most of our work, that she, in this case, could handle, uh, dispositions of cases, either by male or by, um, individuals when they come in. Now, previously, uh, without a special prosecutor, it's been the separate police departments, and they have their prerogatives as to, uh, how to dispose of cases, whether trials or plea bargains, so there's been, uh, not necess- a uniformity between the police departments, but not uniformly, uh, for all citizens. So, the special prosecutor can get a handle on that, and she can manage that, and she can offer fair and reasonable dispositions. That's her call, totally. That's not judicial call. Her call as to what she feels is appropriate resolution of the case. Um, in that way, the public, I think the town board is really, uh, serving the public very well, because we serve the public, and in this regard, everybody would have a relative certainty of what to expect, what fine parameters would be, what tickets would be, what a common sense, but legal and appropriate resolution of, of matters. Right now, without the resolution, without the special prosecutor, we've been going very, um, well, but this will make it much more efficient, be beneficial to the town, and I've had an opportunity to interview Prosecutor Carrie, and I find her, I just wanna go on the record, very professionally, um, thorough. She has really anticipated, uh, the action that she's gonna be involved in, and she's gone to other, at least one other town or another, uh, town before this, and talked to the prosecutor, not immediately, but outside the immediate area, to get their perspective and then find out how things work. And we've had discussions on that, and I've had brief discussions with Joe on that about how it, uh, might go forward, but in sum and substance, the prosecutor, uh, you have people coming to your town, and they wanna know, they wanna make sure they're treated fairly, and they wanna make sure they're treated uniformly, no matter who the police department is. And by the way, all the police departments treat everybody fairly, but there are, understandably, they have different rules or parameters. This way, she has the authority, and she would be appointed, uh, and authorized by Bill Grady, the district attorney, to do that, so, um, you, I just want you to be aware that her, once you appoint her, she's under the direction of the district attorney. But I'm looking forward to, um, uh, having her, um, interact with defendants. It, uh, might, uh, and again, it will do away with some of the uncertainty. It'll be more efficient and will be fair. Uh, I know some, a lot of the details. If anybody has any questions, board has any questions about how that might work. And that, by the way, I don't wanna forget any zoning, uh, matters that the, uh, town wanna, might wanna bring in front of the court. That, that will be handled the same efficient way. If anybody has any issues, I can help answer that, but I'm, uh, very optimistic. It's gonna work.
Um, we have a resolution, uh, later in the agenda to appoint, uh, Carrie Yamashita. Uh, I let, uh, Judge Kane know that this resolution is on. I've let, uh, Judge Sanchez's clerk know that, uh, this resolution is on, if anybody wanted to come and, uh, say something before we vote on the resolution.
Also, um, just to reiterate, the zoning review group, which is comprised of our land use attorney, the chair to our planning board, and, uh, zone, and zoning board, wholeheartedly endorse this. Um, one reason is so that our zoning enforcement officer, or zoning administrator, can write orders of appearance for, um, chronic zoning offenders, and we have several-
Violators.
Violators, and, um, our special prosecutor can address some of these issues here in our town court, which saves us the expense of going to, um, a higher criminal court.
And also, on that, um, zoning issues, um, Carrie, in this case, is a special prosecutor and address these issues, and right when the, when the planning boards and zoning board have those issues-
Yes.
It's important they can be addressed, because previously, uh, similar to other towns, before they had a special prosecutor, if you had a zoning issue, no matter, uh, how complex it was, it's still everything. Some were less complex-
Yes.
But they're all are important, and you had to refer it to the town attorney, and he or she-
Has to-
That should be a big deal. It is a big deal, but there was a, not a, uh, efficient way to handle everything else.
Seems like an efficient and common sense way to handle some of these issues that we have to deal with, and to me, I won't speak for the rest of the board, I thought that it was important to have somebody who was a Rhinebeck resident working with our town and the different departments, because there's a sensitivity to, to serving the citizens and getting some things accomplished that, you know, we need.
Judge, when this first came up, um, about us having a special prosecutor, the way I came to view it is she's part of, or he is part of our judicial team.
It's really-
No, the budget line is part of the town attorney's section. Uh, she's not in the budget for the courts, she's outside, uh-
It's, uh-
The courts, just like the attorney for the town, uh, that, that's where we're putting the special prosecutor.
She's a prosecutor for us, but I have a question that kind of aligns with that. Now, for the zoning issues, the CEO is the enforcer for those laws, as, as the police are the enforcers for the traffic tickets, right? So, so she, she would take direction or follow-up from there in place?
Yeah. That, that's a good point, Judge. She, she, um, can work with them very carefully. She's their prosecutor for them. She's their lawyer, uh, and, and with the prosecutorial authority and discretion, and, um-
I wasn't speaking budget-wise.
No, no, not budget, but just con-
Yeah, I wasn't speaking budget-wise.
No, but just-
And implementation.
I understand, but just conceptually, these judges have to be right in the middle and independent, and the prosecutor, in effect, they're no different than the district attorney in many respects, the assistant that comes to the town court. And, um, that, this is the same way. It's just a different, um, different things that they'll be, that she'll be handling.
Good. I appreciate your support.
Thank you for coming in.
I wanted to thank Joe for asking me and for you taking your time. Okay.
It makes me feel good to know that you're supportive of it.
Great, appreciate that. Um, all right, so moving on, um, we'll follow up with item seven on that specific issue to appoint a special prosecutor later on. Item D is a public comment from Anthony Gasperini.
I came here very discouraged, but after hearing the Honorable Justice and Board take up this discussion about special prosecutor, I'm very happy to hear that. Um, I'm here tonight, as you may recall, uh, back on November 26th of last year, brought to the board's attention, uh, zoning violations. And, uh, as a follow-up to that, I copied each board member back in April on, uh, another complaint regarding property at 97 Old Albany Post Road. For the record, my name is Anthony Gasperini, and I live at 102 Old Albany Post Road. Since I haven't heard from anybody from the board, um, I'd just like to ask what your comments were, if any, regarding, um, the letter that I, uh, submitted to your zoning officer.
Well, let me say that, um, you know, this thing with the special prosecutor coming on board, we now have some direction, okay, for this, so, um, I don't wanna really open the, the board to comments on this for that reason, because we wanna let her be able to prosecute that and not-
Okay.
-create any kind of a conflict for that path, so, um, this, this, I mean, by coincidence, I guess you're here, and we-
It is.
Did the same thing, so-
Purely coincidence, yeah.
So, we are, we're in good shape, at least.
Okay.
Okay, so, zoning issues are difficult to prosecute. To have somebody specialize in it is important to us, uh, so we've had difficulties, no matter, forever.
Well, I've been dealing with this since 1999, and, uh-
But Mr. Gasperini, let me make clear. We can't do anything for you.
I understand that.
The person who, uh, can do something about zoning violations, zoning enforcement officer, he is the only one who has power to issue, uh, summons, appearances, stop orders, so you really have to direct yourself to him.
Well, I did, and in fact, if you read the letter that I directed to each board-
I read it several times.
But, you know, I, you know, I appreciate Mr. Gasperini's, you know, opportunity to approach the board. He has the right to speak to us about his concerns, so-
He, he just generally, uh, shared his frustration, because as you pointed out, you're a legislative body.
Right.
Uh, you, you can-
Mr. Gasperini, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, what he demonstrated to me was, uh, there's no teeth in the law, so I think the board is moving in a, a good direction.
There was always teeth in the law.
Yeah, well-
Always teeth in the law.
I didn't see any teeth.
There are. You see an article on fines and penalties.
I'm talking-
I, I swear it is in the zoning law.
Well, with all due respect, I've been dealing with this for 13 years, and I see no teeth, and that's my personal opinion and observation.
Here's one-
Also, I learned from the zoning officer that there's a noise ordinance, but the zoning officer is not equipped with a meter, nor is he trained, because I spoke to all three law enforcement agencies, from the village of Rhinebeck, the Dutchess County, um, Sheriff's Department, and the State Police, and they said they will not come out and issue tickets for noise violations, because it's up to the town. It's an ordinance. So what I'm just asking the board tonight is, um, to give, uh, the proper employees of the town the proper tools and equipment, so that they can follow through in enforcing and documenting this, because I think it would go a long way to assisting the special prosecutor in any and all, um, future grievances, okay? I just wanna let you know, I'm still out there. We're still suffering. We're suffering even more, because now it's a harassment issue. I'm not gonna waste the time at law enforcement agencies, because they have other things to do, but, uh, I just wanna remind the board that we're out there, we still have a problem, and I like it addressed, and I appreciate the movement in that direction.
I do want you to understand that we haven't ignored your complaint, and you have my number-
Yes.
And I'm willing to say to you, when there is an active issue, you can call me at home on my home number-
Yes.
And I will personally contact the zoning enforcement officer, and he and I can drive over there.
Yeah.
I also want you to know that since you first appeared before us, every single time I drive to Poughkeepsie to pick up a child, or a friend, or a visitor at the train, I purposely go down your road, both on the way there and on the way back.
Correct.
And I, and I do it maybe once, sometimes twice a week, and I personally haven't heard anything that would be offensive to me, but that's subjective, and, but I want you to know that I've taken it seriously, and I drive by your road way more than you realize.
I appreciate that, but probably unfortunately, with all due respect to you, uh, you're driving by at the wrong time, because I do call the board members, and I think everyone knows that I've called them. Um, Elizabeth has been very helpful to me. In fact, she even heard the noise over the phone, that one incident, and she asked me how far I was from it, and I said, "I'm standing 150 feet away," and she goes, "Oh, my God, why don't you call the zoning officer?" But what I'm saying is, I think you're missing the point here. You know, you can't enforce laws if you have something on the books, and you're not giving your employees the proper tools to go out, and also-
Don't we have a noise meter with me?
Also, like, this incident happened at 5:30 at night, so in that letter, if you saw, I asked, "Who may I contact and when, so I can facilitate proper documentation?"
You can call me anytime.
Yeah, but do you have a noise meter? Are you able to through-
I can access it-
Okay.
And I can get the zoning enforcement officer.
All right, so what I would respectfully request, then, is that you get it, because it'll be an opportunity, usually every Tuesday and Wednesday nights.
You know, Mr. Gasperini, and we spoke on the phone-
Yes.
The part of the, um, uh, the reason why I'm, I'm really so pro the special prosecutor is so our zoning administrator can issue orders of appearances, and we can prosecute these, these cases here in Rhinebeck. We don't have to hire an outside attorney and take it to a different court. We can do it right here.
Okay.
And, you know, we've spoken about your case and other cases, and it's something we would, in the zoning review group, and it's something we would, you know, we would like to, um, pursue.
But, but Joe's point was, the CEO has to issue the ticket-
That's right.
-for the special prosecutor.
Yes.
It's not any other group. It's not the board. It's not a zoning review thing, but we can't judge it, and we're not judging it.
No, I understand that, but in order to issue some sort of notice of enforcement, you have to have the tools proper in hand to facilitate the documentation, because no special prosecutor's gonna waste their time prosecuting a case when you don't have proper documentation.
And our zoning administrator will-
Well, your, your letter covered a number of things beside noise. We'll have to investigate how we did noise for the gun clubs. I think, uh, maybe the gun club hired somebody. I, I could be wrong. I don't know, but I think maybe the gun club hired somebody to measure the, uh, noise, and we'll have to talk among ourselves as to, uh, what we think the proper way to go is with respect to noise. You had other complaints in your letter of unauthorized, uh, staying over a ring accessory building.
Correct. Yeah, because what that personally led to is an enrichment of this individual, uh, at the expense of every town, uh, taxpayer, because you, you have an enrichment of the property through real property tax, so being a certified, a former certified assessor, um, that's a theft of services, especially when we have a 2% cap. Um, everyone should be judged fairly and assessed fairly, because if you're not, and there's an inequity, uh, people start paying more than what they should. That's just one incident, you know? And I, I did foil the zoning office on the documents, and I have about that thick. What I was perplexed is, there was the same property owner was given a permit back in December, and then given a C of O. When there's outstanding situations, I think the town should've used that as leverage to clear up the other things before, um, the building inspector granted a building permit, and then gave a C of O on another building on that property. I think it would've been a useful tool for the town to use as leverage. But I, I thank you very much for your time. I just wanna let you know, we're extremely frustrated, and, uh, I know behind the scenes, everyone's been doing their best, but, um, from our perspective, it isn't enough, so, thank you very much.
Thank you, Anthony.
Item M is approval for the prior minutes from July 8th, 2013, a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, so moved. Item F, we have liaison reports. Anybody have a report? Item G, our business items, resolution approving abstract 7B, vouchers B 675 through B 719 for $89,281.93.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item 2 is a resolution approving the preliminary capital project for 2013, abstract for $1,739. Motion and second?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, so moved. Item 3 is a resolution approving budget transfers and amendments.
Motion.
Second? I'll second that. Any discussion on them?
Was the air conditioning purchase added in there later? I know I saw the, the bill and the-
I don't know.
See where it's, it's, um, or, oh, no, that's under equipment. Okay, sorry. Never mind.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Good. Opposed, so moved. Item, um, 3 is the acceptance of the 2014 highway materials bids. Is there a motion, a second?
Motion.
Second.
Kathy did a great job on that preparation, I think.
And, um, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, so moved. Item 5 is a resolution approving the volunteer application for the aging committee.
Motion.
Second. Now, do we not interview?
Well, the committee does the interviews on this. It's a small committee, and we could if we want to, but typically, we just interview for boards, like the planning board, zoning board, or-
Has the committee interviewed this person and recommended?
It was actually submitted, yeah, through the committee.
I'm sorry?
It was submitted through the committee.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Term ending on December 31st anyways, so, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Item 6 is a resolution approving the volunteer, another volunteer application for the aging committee, so, um, any discussion on this application? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, so moved.
I have a question. This person is not a, is a resident or isn't a resident, and does it matter?
Uh, it does matter to me, but, um-
So she lives in Frankfurt?
Yeah, well, that's an address. That's a work address.
Looks like she lives there.
I'm abstaining.
So moved.
Or we could call her.
Well, I just, it's a residency issue for me. It's not clear.
Well, you wanna hold this till next meeting, find out where she lives, and then we can decide?
Well, um, you want to?
Well, if it matters to some people on residence, to me, it doesn't matter, but if some people say it matters, we might as well find out.
She sounds just really great, but I think the address needs to be home address, not your work address.
Yeah.
And, so maybe that just needs to be clarified.
This was through the committee as well, Tom?
Um, I don't know about this one. Let me follow up on this one. Okay, so we'll hold that one over. Item 7 is a resolution to appoint a special prosecutor.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Thrilled.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, that is so moved. Item 8 is a resolution accepting grant for the dog park. A motion and a second?
Motion.
Second.
Second. Nice going, Bruce.
I didn't do it. I just wrote this.
Yeah, you did. Take the credit.
Bruce, where do we stand on dog park? Uh, have we started?
Let's vote on this first, and then we can have that discussion.
An open motion.
All in favor, aye?
We have an open motion. Aye.
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 Close, so moved.
How could I ask where we stand on?
Now we have enough money to go ahead and start buying stuff.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
So we should be, uh, we have bids, or we have quotes. We don't have bids, so I can, I just gotta make sure they're within the thresholds, and we can start doing it.
And you also were trying to raise some money, I think, from the public, uh, and Red Hook. Have we gotten anything?
Uh, they've gotten, the last count I had was 1,600, but-
Oh, great.
But they're still going.
Great.
And that'll continue on. Um, we have people who are putting together a training module for how to use the, the park in safety for your dog and yourself. Um, we have volunteers, and we have donations and different things.
That's great, when people get behind the project and make it work.
Yeah. May come back to bite us.
Park, park.
Sorry. Okay.
Do we have, uh, donation cans in the vets' offices?
I don't know.
Might be a good idea.
My only, I mean, I'm still concerned that we haven't seen the, the fund show up yet that we approved, but I guess that'll get there.
All right, we vote on that. Item 9 is a resolution concerning tax surchargeary proceedings for the Enterprise Farm.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
It's, uh, been discussed with our, uh, surchargeary, our Karen Haggstrom, our attorney, and our assessors are in favor of it, recommending that we accept it.
How does such a huge reduction come about?
You know, we had, because there are no indoor, there are very few indoor riding rigs, and this is what they came up with. I mean, we hired, um, Pete Hubbell, and we conferred with someone else, and we couldn't justify anything more than this.
Hubbell was our appraiser.
All right, uh, you go on then? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, so moved. All right, item, uh, 10 is a resolution for approving the hire of an assistant swim team coach for rec.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, that is so moved. Moving on to item 11, is the authorization for the RSP for engineering service.
Motion.
Second.
At the park.
This is the, um, the ADA pavilion. Warren has renewed it. He's okay with it. We have to add the non collusion clause on the other boilerplate, but it's ready to go.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, moved. Close, moved. Item 12 is a resolution relating to the, to review the, of the draft affordable housing law and SECA. Uh, motion and second.
Second.
Okay, just on, are we up to discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ted Fink has reviewed the draft. We authorized several meetings ago, $1,500 for Ted Fink to look over the draft. He has looked over the draft. Uh, he, his comments were mostly just word changes here and there. There was one substantive change, and we've incorporated his comments into a draft, and now we're ready for the next step, which I think the board wanted John Lyons to take a look at it before we actually consider it in the form of a local law. There also needs to be drafted a SECA statement and findings that the board will have to make. So I'm proposing we retain John Lyons and Ted Fink to, John to review the draft. Ted has already reviewed the draft, and between them, they can decide who should do the SECA papers and take us through that. And the resolution talks about a cost of no more than 3,000. I haven't spoken to John, but since Ted could review it for 1,500, I would think John would probably be the same.
So you're talking 3,000 total, including the 1,500?
No, no.
So an additional 3,000.
An additional 3,000, if it costs that much. I don't know till I actually bargain with them as to how much. But we do have in the budget under comprehensive plan, we thought it would be litigation far more than this amount.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Close, that's so moved. Moving on to discussion items, the 2014 budget. I think Joe, you put this on, right?
But I put this on because I think we ought to set a schedule as to how we're going to tackle the budget, maybe some deadlines. This is going to be a very busy fall, so that I think we should think about when we're going to get the tentative budget from Tom, you, and Shelley, so...
Yeah, how about I tell you?
We're not rushed at the end, where people's minds may be in other directions, so we can...
Tom, when do the budget worksheets go out?
We're going to, um, I'll have the budget worksheets out by September 1st. I'll have them probably, that's, um...
You think we can get, to get the worksheets out?
Right.
Well, then that means we're not going to get it back until...
Well, you have to take, each liaison really has to work with their department or committee.
What time do we want them in?
Right, right. I think they ought to be in...
I was thinking September 1st to have them back.
Well, we can't, um...
I thought they ought to be in by, and we get a tentative budget by August 15.
No, you can't, you can't do that.
Why?
It's, we don't give them out usually, well, we did last year early, but nobody did anything with them last year anyway, so...
Well, we can write on them, but there's no reason, all they're going to, frankly, all they're going to do is put in last year's amounts.
And what's been spent this year.
What?
And what has been spent this year, expenditures also.
Shelley's got to put them together, and I think the date that the state requires us to do, September 1st is on her calendar. I talked to her today. That's when she's ready to do it. We each have to work with our own departments, and then she'll put a preliminary draft together and deliver it to us by, did she say the 20th or the 30th?
Well, I'm sorry. What are you, what are you talking about?
We'll get the worksheets back to her, and she'll put a draft budget together by...
By what month are you talking about?
You guys get, I'll have a tentative budget to you guys by second week in September.
I think we should ask for it earlier. I don't know what the rest of the board thinks, but I think that's too late.
I'm fine with it.
Well, if we get the worksheets out September 1st, when do we ask our committees to get them back?
You've got to sit with your committees and make sure you understand it.
I understand that, Elizabeth. I've done it three years.
You set your own schedule. You know that they're coming.
So when do we want it back?
You could have them out a couple weeks, have them give enough time, at least.
That's what I've...
That's what we did last year.
Done.
Shelley has to put it together.
Exactly, so, that's right.
Yeah, September is, and October are going to be very busy months, for obvious reasons.
This is what she wants to do, and I spoke with her today about it, and I'm comfortable with it.
Well, that's what she wants to do.
We had 17 budget meetings last year, because we started before we had any of this done, and it wasn't that, in my opinion, it wasn't that efficient.
Well, but that wasn't the reason we had 17 meetings. We couldn't agree on certain things.
No, we started before the worksheets were back, and before we had a tentative budget.
No, fact is, we had a tentative budget, and we sat down with it. We can't do anything without a tentative budget. Bruce, how do you feel on the schedule? Gina, how do you feel?
If I get the sheets out and work with my committees and get them back by September 15th, I'm okay with that.
I'm going to have a tentative budget out by the second week in September. I don't know if you know how this works, but I give the tentative budget to the clerk, and the clerk delivers it to the board.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Tom.
What happens is, is the supervisor delivers a tentative budget to the town clerk, and then the clerk delivers it to the board.
Right.
So...
The question is, what day?
The, how about the 2nd, Monday in September, first board meeting in September?
Let's see, that would be, um...
9th.
Bruce, you're pretty silent.
Although, it's kind of, isn't it? It's kind of too soon.
I think the whole process, I'm sorry.
Well, that's too soon, actually, at night.
Yeah, I think, I think you need to go to the second. I think we need to understand what the deltas are, what adds or subtracts we have that are different than last year or this year. Because I think you're right, people are just going to put in, maintain a status quo. And so we need to understand what, whether significant changes, if any, and what's the justification for those.
I think there, at least for cemetery and waterfront, we know enough now that they have to be able to project things that they're planning down the road. There are going to be some changes in at least both of those. Nothing bad, just changing of the budget to make it more accurately reflect the monies they bring in and the monies they put out.
Well, let me give you an example. We're probably going to have to put a new heating system in this place, right? And we're, I think that's part of what Joe's worried about. You know, the, the library just came in and told us they're going to ask for more money. We know we have financing for trucks. We've got a lot of complexity this year, not that we haven't had every other year, but there's going to be a lot more pressure. So I think we need, in order to be efficient, I need, I think we need to be able to speak to every change that's being proposed. And while I think Tom's going to get the worksheets, and he's going to do what he needs to do with them, prepare them as the budget officer, to, you know, whether we go up 2% or down 2% or up 6%, I don't know. We, we were never prepared, and properly prepared. We, we sit here and we say, bring in, you're saying you understand the waterfront, that you can talk to that now, you can talk to the cemetery now. That, that's great. I can't talk to the boiler now.
Right.
Because I don't know what the asbestos abatement's going to cost and that kind of stuff, but we've been working on it. We've been working on it for months. There's really big ticket items that are going to hit this year.
Do you think it makes sense, say if we get the budget September 9, to ask the departments where, if they expect more expenditures from last year's budget by, say, more than 5,000, to let us know in a couple weeks what they think those would be?
Why 5,000?
I'm just picking a number, a significant number.
Why not any change?
What? Any change? Do that?
I mean, that's, that's a good heads up, and that, a lot of organizations use that.
Right, but I guess some people put in, like, wage increases and other things. I don't think we need that.
So make the rules, no wage, you know, forget the wage increases. Don't, don't include that, anything else, contractual capital.
The rest of you, you think that makes sense?
I, I don't see that as a problem. I think it makes sense.
I'm fine with that.
Elizabeth, you okay with that?
Yes.
So, Tom, could we send out a, something in the next week or so, asking people if they, other than wages, if they expect an increase? And you want to do any increase?
Or any change? I like, some might have less.
Including revenue?
Just to balance it out, should we ask for savings too?
Well, you, what you're doing is you're putting out a memo, saying, this is the departmental worksheet that we always ask for every year. That's all you're doing. And, and so, fine, let's do it.
Okay with me?
I'll draft the memo.
Okay.
For Tom's...
Pretty simple. I've done it before. It's just a memo, basically, and, but still, we need the worksheets. There's also an issue with Shelley not receiving her, you know, financial information from the state or from the insurance companies and so on, so...
Right.
Those will probably take...
That will always have to deal with.
I don't know, you can speculate on that. There's also the issue of whether or not we get the, well...
The health insurance or the general, because we're locked in...
Workman's comp and so on.
We're locked, we're good with that through next year.
What's that?
The workman's comp.
Yeah, that's fixed.
Fixed. We're bidding out with the county.
Retirement would be different.
Yeah, but the county's, it's a self-insured plan, so it seems a lot riskier, but Shelley and I are working on that application.
But we'll have to deal with...
The liability and workman's comp is fixed. We know the numbers for this year.
So then all we have to deal with is the medical plan.
All right. So we'll put a memo out, and then we'll have the tentative budget by October 3rd.
By September 9?
Uh, maybe, September 9.
I'll shoot for that.
Well, either that or the week after.
Well, for obvious reasons, for...
The public hearing on the preliminary budget would be, have to be by November 3rd, the Thursday after election day. And that's really our ultimate deadline, is that, get to that public hearing, which would be, um...
The 7th?
I think it would be the 14th, maybe, or the 21st. But it's too soon to predict that.
I'm sorry, what date for the tentative budget hearing?
The 3rd or, the 2nd or 3rd meeting is the deadline for the public hearing on the budget in November.
Oh, okay, yeah.
You mean after the election?
Yeah.
So, okay.
But we can have it anytime before that, so...
Right, got it. Okay.
I don't, usually the board of, I'm sorry, the association, associations of towns puts out the calendar, so it could be in the next magazine that would come in, so just look for that. All right? So, item 2 is a departmental review.
I don't know what it is.
I don't know either.
I think that's this, Bruce.
How's the function and fund review schedule?
I think that's the...
Oh. I don't know what that is.
All right. How about item 3, propose affordable housing?
We talked about that, and we did it in the form of a resolution.
Item 4, for a discussion, the function and fund of review schedule.
Okay, this came up a while back, and some of us have concerns about the visibility that the board has to the different boards and committees and departments, and some of the boards have expressed a need to come before the town board on a more regular basis and not, not when something's burning. So I just put together a draft schedule of when we could put everything in. It'd be twice a year. It's kind of grouped by function, and I'd sent it to you six weeks ago, I guess.
I love this. I think it's really great, and it's really helpful. And I, I don't think it's unreasonable to request some public reports from these different committees at this level. I mean, it's not onerous or anything like that, and I think it makes a lot of sense the way you group them. I don't know if the public has copy of this.
No, they, they wouldn't, because it didn't get into the, whatever the program is. The other thing with...
If anyone wants to borrow mine, you can follow it.
So the top, you know, I, I did what I could figure out. You may want to look at it and change some things. But also, one of the things we've discussed is, we don't routinely charge committees with something to do, so they're kind of self-directed, and so we need to do something with that. And this would be an opportunity to do that. The other thing is that the fund stuff down below, the financials, well, you know, that's one of my problems, that we don't see that on a regular basis, and I, I think we need that, and I think the public needs visibility in that.
Bruce, my one problem is down below, you know, year to date, to me, it's not very meaningful looking at it month by month. I look at it quarterly, that you can't tell anything in January, February. You really need three months to see how we're doing, so I kind of think it's a waste of the supervisor's time to do it monthly, and I would do that stuff quarterly. And, you know, I noticed you have the supervisor and the clerk, and I guess we have the clerk, because the clerk has his own bank account. I raised with John, and I think we ought to figure out, do we really need having the clerk having his own bank account, or is that something that's done where there's an elected clerk? And I guess I don't know enough about it, but I think we ought to maybe talk with the controller's office as to whether there's really any reason for the clerk to have his own bank account, or can he deposit the money right into the town's bank account? So maybe we ought to follow up. If you think that's worthwhile, John, that may save you some time rather than maintaining your own bank account.
What about, I mean, there's the DEC work that they do, licenses and things like that. So that's a separate thing.
Well, just like the justice court, Shelley, the business office makes out the check to the state.
And we never see any reports on the judge's bank accounts. We never, you know, John's good enough to give us a report, a written report, every month or so, but the public never sees any of this. And we, as the town board, are accountable for these bank accounts, but we don't have visibility to them. So that's why I was putting them on here, because we've talked about that.
Well, that, that's...
That we're responsible.
Right, but that's why we audit it once a year. You know, the report John gives us, we can make that public, the once a month, how much money the town clerk took in. Indeed, I think Shelley makes a report monthly as to how much money she's gotten, and we certainly can make that public. I think that's part of the supervisor's report. That's my understanding. And say, the building department uses that to check as to whether the business office is accurately reporting how much money the building department gave... building department gave, uh, the business office. And same thing with the planning, uh, department and the building department. That's all set forth monthly and there's no reason we couldn't make that public if, uh, that, that's what you're, uh-
Yeah, these basic checks and balances, we should be making public.
Yep.
Making available. The, the year-to-date, let me go back to that. Um, I don't know how you can, in confidence, approve the vouchers if you don't know there's enough money in the, in the account that it's being charged to. And that's that report. And we haven't seen that report in several months. So, um, I think we need these things. I think we need this stuff on a timely basis. And whether you like it or not, I need it, because I don't wanna go over budget.
Right, but I'm not saying that you shouldn't get a monthly report. I'm saying, is there a need for discussion here?
If, if, if we get it and we have questions, this is the time to do it, to ask the questions.
Sure.
If we don't get it, then we don't have a chance to ask the questions.
Right, but we're not discussing whether you should get it or not. Clearly, you should get it and you should get it timed.
The public, it should be available to the public.
Right.
Yeah.
I frankly, before I served on the town board, I would've found it very interesting to see how many licenses we, uh, gave out and collected money for every month. I find that interesting now, as a town board member, but as a member of the public, there's nothing wrong with having that out there and I think people would be interested in how, it seems minor, but it's-
It's something we can post on our new website.
Absolutely.
We could just post it monthly. We could build pages.
I think it's intriguing how many people come here to get married, how many births we have, how many deaths we have.
It's a role in violent agreement that it should be published.
Yeah.
I, I don't think, I think, uh, it'd be great on the web. I don't know that, it could take up the whole meeting if we went through every line on here, but this would be, I, first of all, I'd have to office manager.
We'd go into our boxes and then we could ask questions.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it could be on the web.
I went to read-
I don't think the web's set up for something like that, though.
It will be.
That'd be great.
Sorry, what? It will be. I said, it could be on the web.
The web is set up for something like this right now?
I didn't hear what you said.
I said, the web is not set up for something like this right now?
We haven't finished our migration to our new dual guardians.
But, but the old website was set up for-
Yeah, we got, we have someone working on it right now.
The old website was set up for, you could post, you know, PDFs or documents up-
Well, you can put a PDF on, sure.
Could, but the way it's organized is a little difficult. You know, if we have like a monthly click on this for your monthly report, um, yeah, we could.
Could've started the budget by now with this.
Pardon me?
Could've started the budget by now with this, with this kind of information, so. All right, so, um-
But, but you're right. That's the, that's the point with this. The, the point is, is we're sitting here, we're, we should have this on a monthly basis. We should be reviewing it. It's our job. And we don't have it. And the public has no clue. Thank you, I'm glad we're all agreed on it.
When are we starting this?
Item five is, uh-
When are we start, when are we starting this?
See if we can put it together in a, in a way that can be done this way.
We, we could go with the August stuff, which is land use. Put 'em in in the-
Speaking of August, are we having meetings in August?
That's a good question.
Well, I don't always say if we have a forum. If we have a forum, let's have a meeting.
Are we done with this? Do you wanna move on to that as a discussion item?
Sure.
Okay. I know I'm away for the first meeting in August. That's the twelfth.
And Tom, you're away as well?
Yeah, coming back on the, um, twelfth. So, um, you're away as well?
Uh, I'm gonna be away later in the month. I'll try not to be away all at the same time, wait until August twelfth.
Which, you're leaving here?
I know, right? I think we shouldn't meet during Fair Week. That's just my feeling.
Shelley prefers that we, for voucher's sake, the twelfth is fine if we cancel. At the end of the, uh, month gets more problematic for getting bills approved.
So if we had, if we, Bruce and Joe and I can meet on the twelfth.
I'm feeling it.
Are you?
Coming down with something.
Um, okay, well, I'm good for with whatever everyone else wants to do. And if I have to come on Monday night of Fair Week, I'll be here.
All right, so there's a quorum not to have the meeting on the twelfth?
I won't be here.
So let's, let's cancel.
Okay. So we'll meet the twenty-sixth.
Twenty, yes, twenty-sixth.
Okay.
We're still meeting on the twelfth?
Hmm, we just had a quorum.
Oh, no, why are we meeting on the twelfth? I think it's important that-
We don't have a quorum.
When you say we don't have a quorum, you have Bruce, Gina and myself.
Bruce, are you here?
Yeah, I'm here, but I can go either way.
Look, I think it's important to have meetings. We get paid for having-
All right, you guys have a meeting on the twelfth.
Meetings, we have resolutions all the time. And if somebody can't come to a meeting, they can't come to a meeting. People miss meetings. The world doesn't come to an end.
Joe, uh, you have your meeting on the twelfth, it's okay.
All right.
Item five, that was four A, by the way. Item five is stellar decline bills. We have some outstanding bills that we haven't paid our, uh, previous attorney, county attorney. So, um, we have a list, I think, is that here?
Yeah, I have, uh, a list. Um, one of them, I'm taking care of by writing a letter to Pam with respect to Williams Lumber Article Seventy-Eight proceeding. Uh, I have a note here, Bruce, there's a Vandenberg Cove bill that, uh, you said we shouldn't pay, but are you gonna write a letter to Pam?
I said we shouldn't pay.
I don't know, it's, uh, six hundred and fifty-five dollars. I can show you, or Shelley can show you the bill. If we're supposed to pay it, we should pay it and, uh-
As far as I know, all the Vandenberg Cove bills are supposed to be paid.
Okay, um, then can you speak to Shelley about this one? Cause she's holding this one.
Does it have a, a number on it, Joe? An invoice number?
Yeah, right. I, I don't have, Shelley has.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, there's a couple for the gardens, um, um, but unfortunately, the big one is, uh, ten thousand five hundred, uh, for Reinbeck Muse, and we do not have money in the escrow for that. So, I think it's the town's responsibility, uh, and, uh-
Have we asked Reinbeck Muse for the money?
Yes. We have.
We don't have, the escrow wasn't funded?
Nope, it wasn't funded.
Um-
So, we can speak to Pam and figure out who ought to do that, but I think the town's gonna have to pay something.
Yeah, um, despite there not being an escrow account, we're still accountable for the fees and the, the services we were providing.
Well, it's a big deal not having an escrow funded to the tune of ten thousand dollars. That's major.
Absolutely.
How does that happen? How, seriously, how does that happen that it's underfunded?
Our tax cap is, that's a quarter of our tax cap.
I know. And they just, so-
Well, what was it, Planning Board or Zone Board?
Uh, you may know more about Reinbeck Muse. I think it was Planning Board primarily. Um, you know, it's a-
So at some point, the Planning Board should've gone to Reinbeck Muse and said, we need you to fund the escrow account to continue any further? And they didn't.
That's the way it's supposed to work.
But we don't know if that's the scenario, so.
No, I don't. I just don't know how it's-
We can get more detail on that from Pam, probably. Right? We should probably get more detail of what it was, I suppose. But even so, we have-
Well, we have the detailed bill, I think. It's a question of, uh, see if she'll cut it some.
Were they giving us, um, regular bills that we knew that it was going overboard or did, was that a surprise to everyone? I would certainly go to them and ask them to cut it.
We can check as to whether, uh, how close the bills were to, uh, the services. That has not been checked. We should check that.
So we'll carry that over to next month, to next meeting, okay? All right. Uh, we have our, uh, county legislature here.
Thank you, sir. I'll try to be brief. Uh, just wanted to invite everybody to be here this Wednesday at six PM. Uh, I know that, uh, I think at the May Village Board meeting, there were quite a few folks apparently who have had some concerns with the forty-seven West Market Street property here in Reinbeck. Used to be owned, managed, controlled, run by the Dutch County Department of Mental Hygiene. There are now three different nonprofits operating in there, Occupations Inc., Hudson Environmental Health, Lexington Center for Recovery. I've done some digging. Uh, rumors are flying around that, uh, Margaret Hurst from the Dutch County Department of Mental Hygiene will be there, will be here to answer questions, as well as one of the top-ranking officials at Occupations Inc. Uh, uh, what we're gonna be doing here Wednesday at six o'clock is not about the blame game or finger pointing, but about trying to come up with a solution. And, um, apparently, instead of the Reinbeck Village Police showing up on a daily basis, uh, over at that property, which apparently was happening for a while, uh, because there's now a smoking gazebo that has been placed behind that property, apparently some of the problems have lessened and abated and been ameliorated, 'cause apparently Occupations Inc. had a non-smoking policy on, on all the grounds. Anyway, it's a complicated issue. I, I've been battling privatization, uh, and budget cuts, county budget cuts, mental health care system for many years. There's a lot of things going on. Um, I'm still sort of fact-finding, investigating and taking public input. No matter how you feel about this, uh, this Wednesday at six PM here in this room, I invite you to join me. Um, found out recently that two million dollars in bad debt, you know, student loan problems. I was sent to collections, uh, last fall, uh, Dutch Community College student loans. So, that's why, there's a number of reasons. Uh, if you listen to, if you believe even a teeny-tiny fraction of the testimony of the Dutch United Educators President Joseph Norton, uh, there's just way too many questions about what's going on with the finances at Dutch Community College. And frankly, to be honest with you, there's a number of Republicans and Democrats in the county legislature. It didn't split along party lines, the vote that went down recently in the county legislature about to approve or disapprove the Community College budget. I'm still working on the pesticide neighbor notification legislation and the well-testing legislation that the Poughkeepsie Journal's editorialized for three trillion times. Hopefully, those will be coming up to a vote soon. Um, the Rockland County Executive, a month or two ago, actually signed into law a ban on fracking fluids in Rockland County. So, uh, still sort of trying to work on that here. There's quite a few municipalities all across the state that are moving in that direction. The only other thing I was gonna say is, I wanted to invite everybody here to another forum I'm hosting. Uh, it's Wednesday, August fourteenth, six thirty PM in this room, Ten Ways to Save Dutch County Tax Dollars. One just blows me away, the, you know, about the jail issue. Um, I do a radio show at WHBW nine fifty A on Saturday mornings. John Chaney, who's the executive director of Conllard, has called in a number of times. He reminded me this Saturday morning, they have a program in Brooklyn set up by the DA there that cuts the recidivism rate in one year at the cost of less than twenty-three hundred dollars per person. Cuts the recidivism rate from sixty-one percent to twenty-two percent for twenty-three hundred dollars. Now, Mr. Town Supervisor, I think you're well aware of the criminal justice system in Dutch County, as opposed to spending twenty-three hundred dollars on twenty-three days for somebody to be in jail, right? Cause it's roughly a hundred dollars a day. Imagine if we had a program in Dutch County for twenty-three hundred dollars per year, per participant, cut the recidivism, and this is the Harvard School of Public Health. New York Times recognizes. It's just one of a trillion reasons why I and a lot of other people are particularly thrilled with the, uh, the notion of a new two-hundred-million-dollar jail. If you missed the front page of yesterday's Poughkeepsie Journal, Sarah Bradshaw's piece, there's a lot of facts in there. I urge you to please, uh, read it. Uh, I'm not gonna go, you'll be happy to know, I'm not gonna go through all the ten different ways to save county tax dollars. I know everybody wants to get out of here. I'll just say, uh, one way. The Washington DC City Council just passed a law this year, making sure that people at Walmart are getting paid twelve fifteen an hour. Now, what does that have to do with saving tax dollars? They've found out that basically we are subsidizing to the tune of about a million dollars a year, every Walmart store, 'cause the workers there, they don't get paid a lot. And Walmart instructs them to, you know, be very good at applying for subsidized housing and food stamps and Medicaid and Child Health Plus and Family Health Plus. And I don't wanna deny those workers those benefits, but who pays, who's subsidizing the poverty wages? Who's making up the difference? Us, after Walmart crushes all the small businesses. There are a lot of different ways we can save money in Dutch County. Be here, uh, Wednesday, August fourteenth, six thirty PM. Thank you for your patience. Um, Joel Tyner, eight seven six two four eight eight.
Uh, I'll leave the floor over for public comment if anybody wants to make a comment. If anybody doesn't, I don't think we have an executive session tonight, so motion is second to adjourn.
Motion second.
I'm all in, favor I.
Aye.
I oppose, that's so good. Thank you.